17th meeting of the Holyoke School Committee to order at 6:05 PM. Roll call, please. Present.
Present.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mayor wanted me to let everyone know that he's at the city council finance meeting tonight, so he won't be here, no. We just had, is there any public discussion, Ms. Lefont? Okay. We just had our student showcase, which was a great tour of the STEM Academy here at Holyoke High Dean Campus, and I would encourage anyone who has not had the opportunity to check out the STEM Academy to reach out to either one of the principals to set up time just to take a look at all the great things students are doing. You may have the opportunity to see a sheep's brain, so that was the highlight of my experience.
And a heart.
And a heart.
And a heart.
So we're going to skip around on the agenda a little bit. I think we're, first thing we're going to do is our presentation of the Mass Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence, and then we'll go back to our student reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sheehan. I do, last month, you remember, we awarded a, one of the district Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Awards for Excellence, and this is first, we awarded one to a student from Holyoke High North Campus. Tonight, we're recognizing a second student who started the year on the Dean Campus, but he's now on the North, the Holyoke High North Campus, and we're going to recognize Orlando Garcia. Orlando is one of our posse candidates. He strives for excellence in his academics and always seeks to be challenged. An example of this would be seeking to take a physics course at HHS North, which he's currently enrolled in. Orlando wants to major in physics or engineering upon entering college. He's a role model within the classroom. He currently has a 3.3 GPA. He has been enrolled in honors courses at Holyoke High School Dean Campus throughout his entire academic career. Orlando also participated in dual enrollment during the spring semester last year. Orlando was a student in the electrical shop before transferring to Holyoke High North this semester. So I want to recognize Orlando. Do you mind taking a photo? Let's give him a big round of applause.
Orlando, just a quick question for you. What are your plans after you graduate? Any top choice, or?
UMass Amherst is where I'm thinking of going mostly. I also applied to Harvard, though. I mean, I don't know if I'll really make it, but.
Well, Dr. Mahoney worked there last year, so he could help you get in there.
But I took a shot at it, because you never know, you know?
Yeah, that's great.
Absolutely. That's what I'm thinking of doing.
Well, good luck with everything. Keep us posted.
Congratulations, Orlando.
Congratulations.
I just also want to add that Orlando was one of 64 Holyoke High School seniors who were recognized this morning for earning a John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. And so when he gets accepted to UMass, he's got about $1,600 per year in tuition paid already, so he's a great young man, yeah.
Congratulations.
And congratulations to your family, too. Thank you for coming out. Now into our student reports. Whichever one of you would like to go first can.
I don't know if I'm supposed to say my name again. I'm Derek Weiss. So recently, maybe, what is it, like two weeks ago? Me and Mariani both got onto the student equity team, and in that team, we discussed, you know, between equity and equality, and we see how both the Holyoke High North and Dean were, I don't know if I'm too close to her. So we noticed how both of us got together and that we had these activities and we had fun with each other, and we also learned the difference between equality and equity and how we can incorporate that into our everyday at each of our campuses so that we can, you know, merge into that one big campus.
Also, on this Wednesday, we're having a pep rally at the North Campus. The whole Dean Campus is going over there depending on buses or personal transportation, but we're really looking forward to it. This morning, the seniors got their shirts, so like they were like pumped up. I saw some of them with the bows, class of 2019, so that it's really well how they're taking it, being one school, two campuses. I really thought they were going to be a little bit more like bought up, but honestly, it's really beautiful how they're taking it, really. I thought it was going to go way worse, to be honest. But for the equity team, at first, the campuses stuck out like different, but after a while, we, doing the equality versus equity, we got our own thinking process together and we worked together as a team. And we also had a big breakfast from the culinary department, our Dean Campus, so they really enjoyed that, so.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So real quick, I know, I did see the message for Wednesday, so just to clarify, Holyoke High students, North Campus will go to their regular classes, and then the Dean students will start at their regular time, but being brought straight to the North Campus and you guys are just waiting in the gym? Like, how is that working out?
For me personally, since I take the bus, the bus has taken us straight, when the last stop is done, we're going straight to Holyoke High. Since we start a little bit earlier than the North Campus, we're just going to wait and we're going to go to like normal homeroom with some of the North Campus's homerooms as well, so we're going to kind of like going to merge it.
Okay, because I thought that they were going to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so up in Holyoke High North, we're actually going to take our A Block class, and then we're going to be proceeding to the pep rally, but some of us don't have an A Block, so we will be arriving at exactly B Block.
No, I thought that they were going to be waiting in the gym until then the other students came down.
Our Dean students will be coming on in at 7:30. We'll gather in the gym for 10 minutes. They'll go and get breakfast with all their classmates in the cafeteria, and then we'll be combining homerooms. I mean, actually, because it's a half day, we'll actually have an extended homeroom where teachers are in those combined homerooms. They'll be doing some getting to know you and getting ready for the pep rally, and then our pep rally will begin at approximately 9:15, 9:30, and run for about an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes, and then kids will leave, get lunch, and then we'll dismiss everyone at the same time. It's going to be great, yeah.
Great. Mr. Brunel.
Do they still have where the chickadee would come, geez, not chickadee anymore?
I know, sorry.
Do they still have, what, South Halley?
Yeah.
So does South Halley come over to us, and we went over, that's how they used to do it, like they would have?
Yeah, no, we're, yeah, we're only going to see South Halley when we beat them on Thursday morning.
Right. Remember that, John.
At home, right?
It is at home. It's at home.
I just want to add that when they, when Derek and Mariani talking about the equity work we did, that's the superintendent advisory group that we, was a recommendation out of the Equity Task Force that Mr. Burks is part of, and so we had our first meeting, was it last week, and then we have another one in two weeks. It's every three or four weeks, and we have about, we have about, what is it, 15 to 20 students that are on it, and it's a mix of all levels, all backgrounds, both campuses, and ultimately, we're going to get to a place where they're going to be providing recommendations to the school district around how to make the experiences and opportunities more accessible to all students. And already, you can see this is a group of students that are not going to be afraid to share their, you know, speak their mind, right? I mean, people, once they got more relaxed and they ate some bacon, right, especially, people really began to open up, and we hope, and this is, we plan to have this group meet not just for the rest of this year, but for the ongoing, and we had a ton of interest of students who wanted to be a part of it, and it's great to have Derek and Mariani because they've served this role on the school committee and they can report back and forth to the students about what hap, well, to you all, and what we're doing, and they can report to students what the school committee discussed.
Now, are parents invited to the pep rally?
Yeah, this is my first time. I've already had a school committee member ask, Derek and I click the flag, no on that. But, you know, I think. Several students were performing, carefully speaking, high decimal of joyful noise. My question words.
Okay, thanks.
That's good, thank you.
If they do, though, they have to remember to sign at the office and go through the normal procedures, so even if you're visiting, can't just go up to the gymnasium. So, thank you very much. Moving on to the winter work update.
Just before we get to the presentations, I just want to acknowledge Jose Bo in the audience, who's our new manager of family and community engagement, who's there. If you could just welcome Jose to the Holyoke Public Schools. Some of you had a chance to meet him, but he'll be leading our equity work and our family and community engagement work in the system. Okay, so we're going to start with our high school redesign. Oh, no, we're going to go weather work? Well, it's, I think what's up is high school redesign. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, 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 you're ready to go. We're going to start with weather work here.
Aaron, can you actually come over here, because there's no microphone?
Yep.
With the new tables, they're all.
Yeah, so weather work, AKA.
Seat's always open.
All right here.
Don't tell Mayor Morris I'm going for his job. I like mine.
So, moving on from the comments here, AKA weather work, but known as, in many communities, as blizzard bags. Aaron's going to provide you with a update of where we landed as a school district after much conversation internally that we've had over the last year or so. So without further ado, we turn it over to Aaron.
The family letter was included in your packet towards the end, but really, I'm here on behalf of, on behalf of Ruth Silva, who's a first grade teacher at Metcalf, and Julie Griffin, who's a fourth grade teacher at Ian White, and as part of their teacher advisory group, they did all the planning for the weather work pilot, which is a pilot for this year, meaning it's on a trial basis. After gathering a lot of input from teachers and also consulting with Dussey and other leaders and looking at the, looking across the state at what folks are doing, our weather work pilot will only take into effect if we have five snow days this year. So right now, if we have no snow days, school is scheduled to end on Friday, June 14th. If we have five snow days, it would end on Friday, June 21st. If we have more than five snow days, we want to guarantee to families and students and teachers that it still would end on Friday, June 21st. In that case, say we have that sixth or seventh snow day, students, or teachers will plan assignments for students to do at home that are representative of the grade level standards, and then would be graded, and students would get feedback on that. And there's a plan for every staff member on a weather work day if it comes into effect, so, you know, everyone from teachers, the classroom teachers, to EL teachers, sped teachers, paras, therapists, the family and community engagement staff, they've all been communicated with in this more comprehensive document about what they would be doing on those weather work days. But the overall purpose is to be able to engage in learning throughout the school year without making up all of that time at the end of the school year when we know our buildings are hot, people are ready for vacation, we want to get summer school started so that would be meaningful learning experiences during the, during the school year if we have more than five snow days. Let's still hope for less than five snow days. Any questions about weather work?
I just have a question regarding the definite 21st as an end date.
Sure.
What about our staff that is hourly based staff that only gets paid for days and hours that they work, that normally their last day of school would be, last day of school, paraprofessionals, cafeteria workers, those types of people that wouldn't then fully get paid for their full year?
Great question. So for paras, it does, they would, it actually only applies for, I believe, food service workers, and in which that case, we want, they would just make up the time that following week. They'd have the option of, they basically have the option of using any accrued time, like personal or vacation time they had, or they'd have the option of coming in at the end of the school year to help with end of year, like tasks, cleanup tasks. But that is not the case for paras. All the para days are, would be accounted for, so that the last para day would be the 21st. And I can follow up with you.
But aren't paras paid by a day by day? So if there's no school day, they either have to, they don't get paid for that day, right?
Correct. So the para one's a little complicated, but basically, on the first one, they would be participating in professional development on a day that we had off in March, and if there's more than one, they're going to be assisting classroom teachers in preparing for weather work stays, or assisting students after the weather work day to make up their work.
Okay, so they're going to get paid.
Yep, everyone gets paid. We didn't use this as like a cost-saving measure or anything.
Right, no, I just, as long as they're getting paid.
They are.
Is there, so to not make up the days, is there a certain percentage of students that have to complete the weather work? So if you have any students that don't complete it, is this mandatory thing? Is there a percentage of students that you're looking for to complete the work so that no extra days have to be added on to the calendar, and how is that going to work for those students?
That's a great question. There's no state guidelines on what percentage of students need to participate. Obviously, we're going to be rooting and promoting 100%. And the, if students are graded on their work, so teachers, in the guidelines, it says teachers will address, say if Doctor Zrake was a student and didn't submit his work, the teacher would address it as if it was any other day where he didn't submit his work. We also, I think a really big part of this is, you know, if we do have the sixth or seventh snow day and students do need to do work at home, we want to make sure that everyone knows that doing work at home on that snow day is not the only option. We realize that some students will need additional support back at school, so any assignment from a weather work day won't be due until two weeks after to make sure that there was sufficient time for all students to get support at school. And then, and then teachers would have a week to get feedback back, because we do want all students to be able to be successful in making up the work and having that learning experience.
This kind of goes on with what you just said, but what if I wanted to do the work on that specific day, but I didn't have that exact, like, support? Like, I couldn't just, like, call a teacher and ask for help? What would, like, happen?
That's such a great question. Thanks for asking. Teachers will be available during the weather work day, either on any time of, like, if you use ClassDojo or something like that, or available by email as well. Some teachers might, I guess, I think it'll mostly be tech-based, and to make sure that students will have help and support, teachers will also be talking to you about the assignment in advance. If we do have to hit that fifth weather day, then teachers will be talking to students. If we do have another snow day, here's, here's what your assignment will be, and especially if it's one of those days where you, like, know the bad storm's coming and you can practically guarantee that school won't be there, we'll be sure to send home both hard copies of the assignment, and also, everything will be posted electronically, too. But even, but if for some reason, you know, you don't, we know that not everybody has internet at home, or you might forget the assignment at school or something, then you'd still have those two weeks to make up the work. Good question, thank you.
How do you get them the assignment? Is there something, you already have it ready to go in case there's going to be a snow day, they know they're going to open up, or you're just preparing? I mean, are they sending out an email to every student? How do they know, you don't know if it's going to be a snow day or not?
So if we, we don't want teachers to have to do work yet on preparing the assignments, obviously. Once we hit that fourth snow day, teachers will be triggered to begin preparing assignments, and then the assignments will need to be uploaded on a portal, which will be accessible through our website, but teachers also will review the assignments with students in advance so that they can ask questions in advance of a snow day. Even if, even if it's like a surprise snow day where we're not exactly sure, once we hit that fifth snow day, teachers will be talking to students about if we do have a sixth snow day, here's what would be expected of you. Does that make sense? Did I answer the question?
Thank you. Are you doing the redesign presentation, too?
Actually, Dr. Mahoney is.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
While we're waiting for Dr. Sure, go ahead.
Just to tap on to the comments about STEM, there is a STEM showcase on Friday, December 7th at 3 o'clock, and that's when you could actually come and see the student presentations, and they can actually, like, tell you what they learned when they were dissecting that sheep brain and heart. So Mr. Mars and Mr. Peterson and the staff would love to have anybody there on Friday, December 7th at 3 o'clock.
As Dr. Mahoney comes up, I do want to acknowledge that I believe Mariani had a birthday this week. Isn't that right?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear.
You have to add dear first.
Happy birthday to you.
All right. Felicidades!
I told you, you shouldn't have told me that it was your birthday. All right. Now that we got that out of the way. Dr. Mahoney's going to provide an update on high school redesign. There were a lot of questions at last meeting, and we wanted to provide you with some more data and information about what's happening as we move to one high school, two campuses.
Great, thank you. So what I hope to go through tonight is, you know, five very specific kind of pieces around our redesign. Town halls, teacher collaboration, early college and dual enrollment, work-based learning, and then the things that are, that are in place now for planning for both, you know, strengthening what we've already implemented and planning for what's ahead of us. Before we start, I do want to bring us back to the overall picture. We are continuing a couple of initiatives that began last year. So we had the freshman academy began last year, and this year's where we have launched our theme-based academies. We've also, we made a very important and deliberate strategic decision to really recommit and build and strengthen our CTE program on the Dean Campus. As far as the freshman academies, while they are not new to the North Campus, they are new to the Dean Campus, and we have also made a much more clean commitment to having a pure freshman academy experience, so that if you are a freshman on a team, you share, you have the same four teachers, and they, those four teachers teach the same 85 to 110 students, depending on what team and what campus you're on, throughout your four core classes with a partner special education teacher as well. We've launched these four theme-based academies on the North Campus for sophomores, Community and Global Studies, Medical Life Sciences, Technology, Engineering and Design, and Performing and Media Arts. But before I go into, into the, those four components that I previewed, what I would do want to emphasize is just the fact that equity and excellence on both campuses has been at the center of all of the decisions that we've been, that we've been making since I came on board this past January. So there are some things that are happening now on the Dean Campus in particular that have not happened in the past, recent past, and I just want to call attention to some of those things that are happening. So we have freshmen back on the Dean Campus, which is a big, a big value added for our CTE shops. We have the Ethnic Studies Program, which has been on the North Campus in its third year now, and it's its first year with our freshmen on the Dean Campus. We have Dean Seniors like Mariani coming on over for our college events, like we, last Thursday and Friday, we had our Massachusetts Celebration of, Massachusetts College Application Celebration, where we hosted 30-plus colleges and universities, as well as three branches of the armed service, and seniors could come on in and get not only complete applications, but we had three or four dozen seniors who received immediate acceptances to schools like Western New England, to AIC, to Elms College, to Westfield State, along with financial aid packages, initial financial aid packages. We've also, as Mariani and Derek were referencing, we've got cross-campus teams of students and staff that are really trying to grapple with very important kind of cultural issues that exist between the two campuses, whether that's the high school culture team that, you know, designed the pep rally and designed the senior cookout, or Dr. Zrake's Equity Team. And for the first time, you know, the students actually had a great idea, coming home from the Equity Team meeting last, was that Thursday? Yeah, last Thursday, which was that our North Campus and Dean Campus students wanted to shadow each other for a day, so they could really understand what is the difference? What's, how different is my experience here on Main Street from my experience on Beach Street? We are also, we've made a commitment in terms of staff and dollars to better support for our Dean students, Dean Campus students, to have access and be able to participate in our co-curricular programs. So I feel really great about lots of the work and things that we have put in place this first year. There continues to be work in front of us, but I feel that the high school redesign is very much on course as far as equity and excellence is concerned. What I want to talk about is some key pieces to, to our redesign. Town hall celebrations are actually new to the North Campus, but they were invented on the Dean Campus. This is a great, this is a perfect example of the cross-campus fertilization that's happening. So our freshman teams and our sophomore teams, be they the sophomore academies or the freshman teams, are getting together at least once a month, where they are celebrating each other, where they are digging deeply into either academic or career kinds of issues and challenges, and where they are building community around a common endeavor. Now, we're doing this, we continue to do this on the Dean Campus, but this is a very new piece for us here, for us on the North Campus as well. So you can see the performing and media arts folks and folks from the Medical Life Sciences, when we have these town halls, they're very interactive. They're not adults talking to students, they are students engaged with each other on work that's linked to either their academies or linked to their successes in their, in their shops on the Dean Campus, or in their academic classes on the North Campus. So for an example, in the TED Academy, kids had to, using straw and tape, they had to build the tallest weight-bearing structure that they could, using just those raw materials, and they had 20 minutes to do that in a collaborative way. We had students build a six-foot tower with straws and tape that could hold three and a half kilograms, which was pretty, a pretty big feat. The town hall celebrations are also a way of making a big school feel small. Part of the redesign was personalizing students' experience at the North Campus, which has over 1,200 students, and anonymity in many ways is the enemy of relationship, and not having relationships is what keeps many of our students from being as successful as they could be in their classes. Okay, teacher collaboration in our academies. This year, not only did we get all of the student schedules out on time before the first day of school, and not only were they accurate, but we also created in our master schedule time during the school day for teachers to sit and think and talk and plan and execute. This is a, this is a picture of, of the Performing Media Arts Academy and getting ready for either a town hall, but during our, okay, during, three times a week, our teams meet, and they talk about culture, curriculum, and data. So when they're talking about culture, they're talking about what's working for our kids, how can we incentivize and reward? and reward productive academic behavior? How do we get at, you know, kids that are, you know, raising red flags around attendance or academics or behavior? They talk about curriculum and then they look at, how are kids actually doing? You know, how many of our kids are getting Bs and As and how many of our kids are getting Ds and Fs? What does our data look like from our STAR testing? How are we using our iXL and our Newsy LA interventions? How are we using the data from that to inform the instructional and curriculum decisions that we're making? A couple of examples of cool things that teachers are planning. In our Performing and Media Arts Academy, in the second semester, we'll be doing a deep dive into the crucible. So, Arthur Miller's story about the Salem Witch Trials, which is actually an allegory for the 1950s McCarthyism and the Communism witch hunts. And so, not only will they be reading it in English, but in geometry, students will be designing the set for the play. So, they'll be using geometry to do set design. In the history classes, they'll be going into what is the, what are the parallels between 17th century Plymouth and 20th century, you know, the United States? And, and what, if any, lessons can we learn for ourselves in the, in the 21st century? And that's an example of how teachers are using this time to plan curriculum. And then finally, I would just note that our, our data in the ninth grade, using our STAR data, we've seen a, a jump of, in two months' time, that our ninth graders who are, who are in our intervention programs have made four months of progress in numeracy and literacy skills as measured by the STAR tests. And what we've done with that is that teachers now have 60 minutes to, you know, really spotlight, these eight kids, you know, are right, right on the bubble? What can we do to push them over and have them get that positive momentum in our, in all four of our classes, not just in the one class that I'm teaching? So, this teacher collaboration is a huge part of our redesign and we're actually looking at how do we continue this as we move into the junior and senior years as we come. I should also just mention, besides ninth and 10th grade, our CTE teachers are now meeting as a team twice a week during their common planning time. And when we get to the work-based learning, I'll talk a little bit about that. So, early college and dual enrollment data. So, you can see on the graph on the left that we have a large jump in the total number of students that are engaged in college-level courses and courses that are, that are, like Derek, either going off campus. Or this year, we have begun a new partnership with Holyoke Community College in an early college program where sophomores currently take, in their, in their first semester, are taking an AVID class. You'll see the picture on the right captures students learning how to use Cornell notes. And in the spring semester, these AVID classes, Holyoke Community College professors will push in twice a week and teach introductory courses that are aligned to the academy theme. So, we'll have an introduction to communication, we'll have an introduction to criminal justice, we'll have a robotics course, et cetera. You'll also, I should also point out that our Westfield Promise Program, which we've just started last year, now has a new cohort of 25 joining the 14 seniors who've stayed with the program. So, there are now 39 students in the Westfield Promise. The seniors travel to Westfield, Westfield State, and they take classes in the morning at Westfield State. Our 25 juniors are now taking classes taught by Westfield State professors either two or three times a week with Joe Corchane or with Kevin Bichard in, in history and English classes. Some of you who walked with the Lieutenant Governor when she came in early September, we stepped into the English class. That's part of that. And then I should just say that 117 number, those are the number of students who are taking dual enrollment classes like Derek off-campus at this point. That is, it looks a little lower than, say, the 2016-17 year, but remember that that's just fall semester students. We'll be signing students up again for spring semester dual enrollment and we may very well get some juniors and seniors who decide that they've got a space in their, in their schedule now where they can now take a class at HCC. Okay, work-based learning. Again, a core concept to the redesign was doing a better job of demonstrating to students the relevance of what they're learning. When am I, you know, answering that question, when am I ever going to use this? You can see here, we've got two examples of one school-based and one community-based. On the left, students from the Community and Global Studies, every sophomore in the Community and Global Studies over the past week has gone to the Hall of Justice, the Handen County Hall of Justice, where they have been guests of judges and the district attorney. The district attorney and his staff actually came to the high school for a community town hall with the CGS students. And then each, we sent, we sent four groups of students to go and observe, how do you conduct the people's business in the courthouse? We actually had, I believe this is the group of students who actually sat in on jury instructions and the verdict for a murder trial and, and were able to meet with the judge and meet with the district attorney staff before and after the trial to get a sense of what's involved in getting to this point in the criminal justice. On the right-hand side, you can see during a town hall, we had students starting to use medical equipment, the medical and life sciences. So, this is trying to, you know, incorporate math with the science. So, you can see that they're trying to get what's the mean, what's the median, what's the, what's the high and the low in terms of beats per minute. And then kids were doing different kinds of physical activities, so either really relaxed breathing, what was the impact on the, on the heartbeat, or push-ups or running around the classroom and to see what they could do to accelerate. I will say that, that on the, on the Dean Campus, we just, two and a half weeks ago, we identified and gathered over two dozen of our seniors who have been kind of tapped by their shop teachers and by their academic teachers as ready to go out on co-op. And so, we have begun working in earnest with, with both the mass hire, the formerly Career Point, with folks and with community partners on getting folks like Mariani out for co-op so that she can, you know, take her, you know, all the background she's got in her electrical shop and actually work with electricians out there. And we're looking to do that in-house. So, we're looking at school department and City of Holyoke electricians as well as private sector and other nonprofit organizations. We are, so, pause there on the work-based learning. And then finally, we do have some next steps, you know, things that are happening immediately. So, this afternoon, before joining Dr. Zrak and the cabinet, our, our redesign team was walking through how are we going to grow out, we've, we've already got how we're growing out the Community and Global Studies Program for 11th and 12th grade, same with the Performing and Media Arts. But the Medical Life Sciences and the Technology, Engineering, and Design, we are finalizing those decisions kind of as we speak. With the TED Academy, we're going to be using a nationally-recognized curriculum project, Lead the Way. It is one of the few curriculums that colleges and universities in the state of Massachusetts will, will give the same weight as AP courses in terms of getting kids college and career-ready. And in the Medical Life Sciences Academy, we're trying to figure out what the right progression of science and how do we want to create the pathways for MLS? And we're probably about a month away from making final decisions on that. And then longer term, you know, I think that obviously we're always looking to recruit strong teachers, but especially given how competitive it is to get into sciences. We really, we're focusing on that now. And then we talked about this at the last school community meeting, but transportation is really, is, is a dilemma that we now have kind of all hands on deck trying to think through what are sustainable solutions that we can, that we can pursue. That's everything from purchasing for our own set, for our own selves, additional vans that will be able to drive seven to 12 students between the two campuses, but as well looking into buses and, and shuttles that can get our kids. You know, next year, you know, right now, we are, you know, leasing, not leasing, but essentially renting a shuttle that brings our 14 students from Beach Street to Westfield State. And we can do that with a shuttle with 14 students. But with 25, we're going to need either two shuttles or we'll need to get ourselves a small bus. And so, we're looking at those and, and looking at several different budget models for how we can pursue those options in the future. So, that's, that's where we are with the redesign. It feels good, but I will say, my last piece will just be that, you know, no structure is, is, is any better than the people who are making it work. And so, you know, I, it would, I would want to just stress that a lot of our work has also gone into supporting our teachers to create and sustain more engaging, student-centered lessons and, and a methodology, methodology of teaching that is consistent across both campuses and that really puts student learning at the center as opposed to teacher talking. So, if you've got questions, happy to field.
Unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to take questions. We can't have dialogue or debate since we did lose quorum. So, the committee's gonna have to recess until a time can be found in which quorum can be established.
Happy to come, happy to come back.
Probably at the December meeting, but we stand recessed at 6:46.